Municipalities Convention. Um, thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to come out and speak with you. I know there's a number of questions. And so uh we really appreciate the opportunity to come out and meet with you to talk about some of some of uh your questions. So I my role is I oversee business strategy and innovation for the Alberta RCMP. So I'm in headquarters and I uh Rita and I'll let her introduce herself and Noreen. They both work in one of the branches that reports up through me. Uh in our operation strategy branch, Rita looks after the financial aspects. Uh and Noreen and her team are research and looked after the workload sort of perspective of this. So um it's nice to be here. Thank you so much. Turn it over maybe to Rita.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, my name is Rachel Brackfuson. I'm the Business Strategies Manager with the Operations Strategy Branch and. Uh my role is all of the the financial planning, the forecasting, the invoicing. Clarity around all of the financial pieces that are coming your way um and hope to answer a lot of questions today. So thank you for having us.
Then Noreen, did you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Noreen Hassan Clark. And I'm the Business Intelligence Manager within Operations Strategy Branch. And so my team and I uh look after research and analysis. Um particularly as pertains to this report, it's the workload analysis um determining what the crime stats and uh workload indicators such as crime severity index are indicating for um resource needs and um just providing some analysis and trends around those crime stats and and resourcing needs for detachments across the province. Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen. So just wanna thank you all for having us here. Um this really allows us to, we we put out a report, a thirty page report. And I'm I'm new to this role, so therefore a lot of that information in the report is not something that I can answer. So I just, I really appreciate the time to to come here and answer some questions and answers and provide a bit of a background in regards to policing and and what the your RCMP provide to your community. So I I guess in essentially, the report is about uh reducing the amount of members and therefore reducing the cost to to the town of Hinton. Um so we've talked a little bit, I can do the frontline placing um side of things and what the the current staffing is like at the detachment. Um we do have nineteen physicians allotted for Hinton. Um we're currently staffed at seventeen physicians. The reason why it's seventeen and not nineteen is because there's times where um these will will take over some of those vacancies as well as um transfers in and outs, injuries. And those type of vacancies. So that is why we're currently at seventeen of nineteen vacancies. So we do uh provide a level of policing that is, I am I'm new to Grand uh from Grand Prairie. So the level of policing here in Hinton is not the same type of policing that what that I was used to in Grand Prairie. There's a very huge component of community engagement in policing in Hinton. So obviously, our uh frontline placing is our priority. And it all will always be whether um you guys uh your decision as a committee is to reduce uh members, our frontline placing will always be um our priority. Uh but the part that will change would be the community engagement. And um I spent eight months in your community before I became uh the detachment commander. And community engagement is is a very, very big part of what citizens want. And because I was a citizen basically for eight months of the year, um I saw the police out. Whether it's um traffic stops, whether it's community events, the parades. Um and so I would just wanna speak a little bit about that. So Hinton Detachment is a detachment where life, work-life balance is a very important part. And I stress that because it is an attraction to senior members to come to Hinton. Um that is not a normal uh a normal thing that I've seen in Grand Prairie as a detachment commander. We received recruits. Um currently, right now, we have six members who are, this is their second detachment. And we have members with ten years of service on the front lines. Um this is, that is not a normal thing that we'd normally see in Grand Prairie. Um so the attraction to Hinton is the work-life balance as well as the schedule. The schedule is a very important part that people search, um which I guess before they transfer to a detachment. Um as well as safe place for families uh to raise their children. Uh as police officers, we are well aware of the types of crimes that are in our communities. And each one of us believes it is very safe to raise our children in Hinton. Um as well, it gives uh members time to investigate files. Um they're not going from call to call to call, but therefore they have time to investigate. They have time to do traffic enforcement, um other types of policing that we would not see as much in other detachments because they don't have the time. As well as they have times to uh promote to our GI section. That is a a very big attraction here in Hinton. Um and opportunities for training.
What's GI?
So GI is our general investigation section. Um we have a three man general investigation section. Um they they work on major and files that the frontline members don't have time. So a lot of it is drug work, uh the warrants. They recently worked on nurses' files for the last two months. Um that's not something that frontline members are able to do. Um they do a lot of property crimes and in the sense they're able to do the surveillance, they're able to do the type of work that the frontline members do not have time to do. So they also bring with them experience because uh GIS is a very sought-after section. So they bring experience from other detachments in and therefore as well as training, they bring their training with them. As soon as we get experienced members, we no longer have to pay for the training. They may want extra training, but we already have a solid base of training if they're coming to us. Um as well as GIS is a proactive unit. So they are taking the files, they're reviewing the files, and then they're making a game plan to perhaps it's um it's a theft ring and they can spend the time to investigate that sort of thing. Um so they have the ability to basically move an investigation further rather than the frontline members who don't have the time. So they, I've been, I have on here that it's a contact with the public and it's an ongoing um contact with the public and which also helps with our our community engagement. So frontline placing, like I said, will always be our um our priority. So therefore, if any reduction was done uh on the RCMP side of things, we would see the cutbacks mostly in uh being able to balance the community engagement part of things. So the many members here find uh Hinton to be their home, not not just their detachment. Where they're posted, this is our home. So therefore, you'll see them at uh community uh the parades and they'll be on their off time. It's not during the time when they're supposed to be scheduled for work. They're they're attending these events on their off time in Red Surge. Recently with the snowflake parade down at the Timberwolves game, and that's all volunteer time. Uh that shows the commitment to the detachment and to the community as a whole. Because if you end up with members who are burnt out, with members, they disengage, they don't wanna be part of the community. They just wanna do their work and they wanna move on. Um so that's, that's a part that I've really observed from being here in Hinton for only two months. And members are very, very engaged with the community. Um Murphy, Staff Sergeant Murphy's been here much longer than I have, and he has seen the the benefits of having the GI section, having the amount of members that we do have.
Everybody in here knows I can talk for hours. Cause to be quite frank, honestly, I wanna answer or make sure that we have ample time to address any questions, concerns. But anything with any historical context, I definitely can assist uh with that. And what I've seen, I was a commander in Hinton from twenty seventeen to twenty one, so I have very good contacts in those years. But I also speak to the previous commander, Staff Sergeant Mark Fitzgerald, who had been the commander for quite some time, previous to uh myself transferring into it. So I do have about a decade uh that I can I can pull and speak to some historical contexts as well. But uh yeah, I'll I'll just leave it here maybe and and uh and maybe start answering some questions to see what that takes us.
Counselor? Counselor Race?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So how are we doing with seventeen members?
Okay, so frontline leasing, how are we doing with seventeen members? So I I I mentioned before that we are experiencing some vacancies. Um and I have not been here when there has been nineteen capacity. So we are, we are managing at this point. Um any extra members from the seventeen to the nineteen. We are able to to further our proactive police work on the front lines. We're able to further engage with the community. Think uh Headquarters, you could probably explain a little bit more about how our proactive and I guess workload with the members.
Sure, sure. If you'd like, yes, to give you a bit of an overview about the workload. And I wonder, um Noreen, if you wanna just maybe give a bit of a description about that uh and the workload analysis that you provided in the in the report. And then if you'd like, maybe Rita can um pick up from there around that.
So um I know that everyone had received the report ahead of time. So let me know if there's any questions about the methodology, but I'll skip the methodology in the meantime. Um and just let you know that our workload is calculated um just at a very high level overview of the methodology and not going into all the details. But um the workload and proactive availability um are both metrics that are calculated using five years' worth of data. And that data includes um calls for service as well as uh da- data about travel time and response times um on route to calls. As well as um all of the information that's in the Police Reporting Occurrence System, so our data management system. And um in terms of currently with the seventeen police officers, I can advise that Hinton is um providing a level of service that um ensures that police officers um are able to appropriately balance their time between responding to calls for service as well as having um available time to engage in proactive activities. And so the proactive um activities are such things as enhancing um police service delivery in the community, community engagement, visibility, crime prevention activities. Um and one of the other components that ensuring that police officers have a good balance of time spent reacting to calls for service and actively engaging in proactive activities um is that it does reduce the incident of operational stress injuries that are a result of burnout. Um and so Hinton at the seventeen um members uh currently out of the nineteen would be sitting at around um seven hundred um workload hours per per general duty police officer, which is a good range. And around fifty-six percent of proactive availability. And just to put that into perspective, um at the municipal level, municipalities um set their level of service, expectations for service delivery um in consultation with the detachment, understanding the community's local policing priorities. Um and then conversations with um the RCMP. So um folks like um my colleague Rita, who um manages the financial pieces and provides guidance on the financial reporting and and um those sorts of things. On the PPSA side, on the provincial side, we do have um some some guidelines around what levels of um workload and proactive availability we want to look at. Um and so at the provincial level, the workload per police officer at the general duty level is around eleven hundred hours of workload and we aim for thirty-five percent proactive availability. Um and falling below that thirty-five percent um level causes for a very reactive police service where um police officers are essentially going from call to call to call without very much time available um to engage in those enhanced service delivery activities in the proactive um crime reduction activities, the engagement with the community, visibility, all of those sorts of things. So I'll leave it at that and see if there are any questions. And also uh give Rita a chance to weigh in with maybe some of the financial pieces related to the seventeen members.
Counselor Taylor? Uh what was that question? Um say, for example, on page nineteen, we um not saying we picked this option, but if we reduce the uh constables by one, it shows that there's a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar savings that looks like first year and a three hundred and twenty seven thousand dollar savings the second year. And that's for one position while we only pay a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year for that position. So can you explain those savings?
Yeah, I can I can address that. Um and it may be fine. I can just give a quick high-level financial piece which will help feed into that. That's okay. So so as a municipal uh partner, I have a fifteen thousand buck relation on, even though that you're uh you're sharing costs in a sense of the all the other municipalities after that fifteen thousand. So as a part of that, you're gonna, you're gonna see a little bit less control potentially as some of those direct costs that go into the budget. Um that being to that per capita, but you're also going to see a a reduction in the adds and flows of what you're seeing for those expenditures. Um because there are a number of communities uh that factor in, any other changes from each of those other communities is going to impact uh the other partners within this bucket, right? So um a a simple maybe to help ask about some of that, um a quick reduction of FTEs might actually lead to an increase in that cost per FTE because it may not result in some other additional direct savings such as a vehicle, reducing by one, yeah, one person might not result in a reduction vehicles. So we're still paying the same cost for some things, but it's allocated out between lots of FTEs, right? Um there's another, another, a number of other factors that can play into that forecast which will impact these rates. But uh that's, that's one.
Just wanna, does everybody understand sort of the contract and it's like the contract that you're part of? And it like that you're like the five to fifteen and the difference between that and the municipal agreement over ninety percent. So that always making sense. I just wanted to make sure that there was. And you do pay, so what do they pay for um for Hinton directly? And then what is sort of part of the pool? It might be?
Yeah, so so part of the whole divisionally pooled, there's the majority of costs are actually divisionally pooled for for your detachment. So the direct salaries uh for all the members, the indirect salary or indirect benefit costs that are associated with that, such as your pensions, your BBEI. Um all of your operating, operating costs, so general O and M to run the detachment, uh guarding costs, all of your equipment. So your computers and computer life cycling, vehicles, um the the operational weapons, the new pistols, tasers, things like that are all part of that divisionally pooled uh cost bucket. The one, probably the key piece is is the overtime that is a direct cost to your detachment that will not be it's your cost to bear, not any other detachment. And that will be basically what you have. Yeah, so those costs are pooled together and just to kind of sync on the forecasting piece. That's, we developed that plan at the start of every fiscal year. We developed a a five-year financial plan, which you may have seen. You know, which which is gathering all that information from the program areas on, you know, what equipment are we likely cycling? What things are going to change, what's happening in training, are there any training requirements for things that are maybe coming off or or changing? Um any equipment is obviously, it's a a significant uh component of some of the increases that you're seeing. Um pay raise obviously is another significant component that you have seen and may continue to see. So all of those costs are are allocated or summed up to determine what is your proportion of that based on that FTE. So um as was mentioned, there's nineteen positions here at the detachment. The forecast is built on that seventeen outworking FTE figure. And uh invoicing is basically developed from there and adjusted as the year goes out based on on what actually happens. Um is that kind of how it answer? Not not quite.
Well, see, to see that, I know that we pay a hundred and fifty-five, which is seventy fifty, seventy percent. We all know that.
Yeah.
And yet the year two number is three hundred and twenty-seven. So is the difference related to those fixed costs that you're talking about?
It it is gonna be related to, cause there's a number of different items that are there. You know, if if some other detachments are reducing those expenditures, they're you know, that cost per FTE is is going to increase there as well. I don't have a detailed list of what every single line item here is, we can provide that for you. But it's 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 based on that calculation of of the adjustments with FTEs.
So a lot of it's, a lot of it might be the fixed costs. And the and then, and then the reason why we see the uh savings so soon the first year? Cause we've kind of been led to believe that we wouldn't see the savings till after in year two or something yet. In this, these reports, we see savings immediately the first year. Is that related to the fact that you have turnover? Uh you know, four to five officers out of the twenty-two in any given year would be turning over, so the savings could be seen relatively quick, is that?
There's, I I think part of that maybe as well that like the current FTE burn rate that's there. Um it it's actually a little bit lower than what that plan was developed based upon. So I think you might be trending a little bit, the the plan is built on seventeen, so you're trending a little bit below that. Even potentially closer to sixteen, so you will see a reduction in your invoice for this period. Um some of the other components, so I'll speak to you a little bit is there's a large number of items occurring or or being planned for, as you've seen, uh the castle is is such a end that discussion has been that the contract will be awarded for that pistol, this is something. Um we just recently learned that 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 is a delay till April. Right, so that's been having impact on what that deployment rule looks looks like throughout all the attachments. And when does that cost actually materialize within your expenditures? So there's a number of different um balls in the air per se of expenditures and activity uh moving around. We developed that plan and forecast and then it's always adjusted as as things materialize or don't materialize in some cases. And then you're only billed accordingly to to what happens there.
Thank you.
Good, Counselor Taylor? Mayor Michaels?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh thanks for uh doing this today. I think this is obviously about a extremely valuable conversation. Uh I love the report, lots of options, and I know we're inevitably going to be talking about the options specifically. But there was, my question is, is is there hybrid options between all the options you provided? Um for us to potentially consider and one specifically, uh let's say it's option one where you wanna remove one. Is it, is it beneficial for or possible for the town of Hinton to uh keep a constable and and perhaps not have uh a corporal uh or that option's not there because logistically it's it's not a good balance? Um uh can we even consider outside of these eight options? And specifically, uh is it better to 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 lose a constable or a corporal or or hint at based on your uh experience here?
So I'm gonna actually direct that because I know there's, there's an easy way to explain um that members have a different weight than supervisors, so.
So so one of the things that when it comes to between a constable or corporal, we have rank allocation tables. So it said, how many, I can't remember the number, but a certain amount of constables means that you have to have a corporal to oversee. And in, you know, um alternative to the team to talk about the duties and the reason why you need that oversight because of the specific, you know, file reviews, et cetera, et cetera. Uh I I wonder if you wanna speak to that?
So yeah, there is a a rank structure, obviously, uh provide that supervision and oversight that we need to have out there. Um there's a number of factors that come into play in around that structure. Um uh it's not just strictly numbers. We don't just have or a constable means we have to have a corporal. There are numbers that uh we do go by, but that's a guideline that we use. And it depends on the the structure that we have to have. So for example, um the the service delivery model that's here in Hinton is twenty-four hour coverage. That means we're running a number of watch systems. Um those watches need to have someone in charge of that watch. So taking away a corporal may be taking away one of those watch supervisors. Okay, or taking away, I go on the GI unit, there's a corporal in in running GI unit. That's provide that oversight and guidance and experience in that GI unit. You take away that corporal, you're losing that experience that's revisited. So maybe they're not supervising as many individuals in that unit, but they are providing that oversight and guidance that that is needed in that unit. Okay, and so we have to take those into consideration as well. So it's uh and from a cost saving perspective, it's really not a significant difference. When you look at uh you know, taking away a constable of the mix or support of the mix, it actually doesn't come up when you're in the cost savings. You're paying the same when it comes to your overall cost model, correct?
Yeah, your your salary ranges are gonna vary depending on the years of service the person is in that position, depending on what rank they are. Like there's a bit of a jump from obviously constables corporal, but there's a number of factors that impact that too when you first turn here, so here's whatever.
I don't know, we'd like to just make sure we're all clear on one thing here. So one thing that came up when I was reading the report and looking at things, I'm not exactly sure what your target numbers are for the for the town of Hinton. Uh nineteen physicians is what's your strength? Years past, you were looking at trending at a target of eighteen people in those positions. But this last year, the target was seventeen. So there's already been a reduction of some sort. I'm not sure if that's just agreed upon already or if it's just something that was carried over because of where we were at with where the positions were filled, cause that's uh where things are at. But I did wanna make sure we're clear on when we're talking about giving up a position, where number we're talking from.
Good, thank you. You good? A a a follow-up then from 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 my perspective on that is is I don't think we have set any targets and it's been a result of where you've ended up in filling uh uh member assignments.
And that's what I wanted to clarify, because I think that's important to to really know where we're looking at from those numbers and where the starting point is, so to speak.
I think this is the first significant discussion you had this regard. Uh Counselor Ross?
Well, thank and thank you, Mr. Chair, for mentioning that, because yeah, we haven't had a conversation like that. Um so uh this is information gathering to know what we have now, you know. So my question uh is based on, uh Noreen, you you mentioned uh operational stress injuries. So it's kind of a twofold question, but it depends on the answer of the first one. So if one of the members go on an operational stress injury or uh who who is then paying for that leave? Uh is it down to Hinton or how does that work?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Right. Yeah, so so anytime uh when you're managing there's the rules around the number of days where they move to that kind of working category versus the special leave category. So when when a member does move to that special leave category, that becomes part of your indirect costs. So you're you're never going to be paying that direct salary for that member if they're not working at full capacity. Um but it will form part of that division administration rate. And I can not agree quickly. So division administration, you'll see that rate is aligned on your invoice and actual statements. The the simplest way to explain that is uh it covers some of that administrative overhead costs, you know, preparing that burden um as a community as as a whole for those resources. So uh part of the administration is the core administration resources and our and our costs. So you know, the overhead for the staff units, for training units, uh Operations Strategy Branch, they said was that form part of that administration cost. Uh you know, the cost of special leaves. So any of those members from from all of Alberta uh contribute to that dividend rate and and it forms for that rate per uh per capita. And then the third key piece is the health benefit cost. So um any of the members can take care of themselves and you know, get back to work. You remember that is, it's part of that health benefit cost. So that forms that rate, it's about where you would pay for those members indirect, you know, on session.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, go ahead. Thank you for that. So uh so what I heard also then said is based on what we currently have staff-wise that our operational stress injuries are uh what I understood to be lower uh than say other detachments that may have less members potentially. Is that what I, is it, did I hear that correctly from Noreen? Noreen?
Yeah, I think that's a fair um statement to make that um again, that operational stress injury will increase or the likelihood of it may increase as um the level of reactive policing increases. So having having the number of resources that Hinton has So having having the number of resources that Hinton has. Currently allows for a good balance between that reactive policing and allowing. The proactive policing, um allowing some of those more positive. Components of community policing and community engagement and and those sorts of things that reduces. The incidence of operational stress injuries.
If I can just follow up on that and then I'll. But where I'm going with this is is, you know, if there was a. A desire to reduce it, we could be looking at a community having more of these operational stress injuries potentially. Reducing the number of members that we have then on the front line, which then also adds the cost to that. Right, and so at least this way, what I'm hearing you say is that having the current. Structure that we have is reducing that, which then puts those members still out on the field doing the job that we expect them to do. Which in a way is, you know, yes, we're getting more more bang for our buck, in other words, you know, so I don't wanna, you know. I don't wanna minimize the operational stress management or the injuries is 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 um uh. It's a real thing, but if we can, you know. Provide our members that that uh uh that. Support uh with other members, then we won't see that as much in the cost point there, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Staff Sergeant, ready?
Yeah, thank you, and I just with respect to the physicians and I. I can comment again for several years past, so uh when I arrived in twenty seventeen, it was the same, the nineteen positions. Were at the town of uh Hinton Municipal side of the R C P detachment. In reading this report, it looks like that uh hadn't changed, or that the last time we increased numbers was two thousand nine. Was when the official people were went in, I'm not sure when those actually were created. But we're we're talking a considerable time prior to that, so it's always been that nineteen. I can tell you it fluctuates from year to year, and it's great for having this conversation, we've got a lot of uh knowledge in this room that uh. Shiloh arranged to bring with her today. But it's very important to, I I think, to recognize as as I went through those years as a detachment commander here. Very seldom, actually, it's only one time that that we actually did have a a full complement of nineteen municipal members. And this for a very short period of time, there's a number of reasons for that, and and most of you have already touched upon this, you know, the transfers in and out every. Every year potentially, uh but we also have other factors that play, and whether it is sickness, but then we got maternity leave, we got paternity leave. Again, those uh time periods have changed from traditionally was twelve months, or when we started, there wasn't paternity leave, now we're looking at eighteen months. When somebody goes on to that type of special leave again after a certain amount of time. The building isn't there, but we don't fill that position, that's still an occupied position, so it's not like we're able to bring somebody else in to fill that, so. When we start talking about the nineteen positions, but we're running at about sixteen to to seventeen here. We reduced those one position, two positions, and then there still needs to be that little bit of leeway, that flexibility. Now you're looking from seventeen to fifteen, you actually have fifteen people here due to those transfers, due to the paternity leave. Due to sickness, to the training, what whatever the case may be. So I I I think, yeah, it's just one of those things, and I think it's great though that we're having the conversation here, because. This should be a conversation that we have with our municipalities on, okay, uh this is what we have for a lot of positions, but. What is reasonable here to to feel, knowing that there's always going to be certain gaps in place due to the transfers, due to leaves, of course.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor, I have you. Counselor Race?
Thank you.
Yeah, um. Like our trouble is that our policing costs have gone up from a couple of years ago at two point one to two point seven budgeted, and it looks like two point nine, so those are twenty eight and thirty. Plus percent increases, so. It's something that we at least have to talk about and look at, look at trying to get uh something that's sustainable for us, because we can't look at those costs. Increasing that way into the future. Anyways, uh my question is uh. Like, I'm looking at an option that's not one of the options you've identified, um it's something that I've heard about, though. What if we were to request an increase in hard vacancies, if you know what I mean? And uh. What would that save us and how would that work? So, you know, I'm thinking that if we. If we if we want flexibility for the future, for if uh policing needs, say in four years, increased. Without having to go someplace and get the position back. We could just uh come to us and say policing needs have increased, let's get one of those positions back, something like that is, and how does how would that work? And what sort of savings would we see? Would we see the same kind of savings, for example, on fixed costs and on salary that we would see here? Is that a, is that a reasonable kind of option?
But I'll let Rita.
To your previous question, because it came to me. In in terms of the the reduction of the three hundred thousand here that was presented in this table fourteen. Part of the the five year financial plan was developed with a forecast, um a seventeen for the current fiscal year. And that was projected to increase to eighteen next year, so a reduction of. One F T E when you bring it from. Uh, from the eighteen, but bringing it down to sixteen, it's reflecting a reduction of two F T Es almost from what the finer plan was, so the finer plan wasn't. Seventeen across the board went from seventeen to eighteen and eighteen out, so that's where. Uh, to speak back to pressure of a hundred fifty, that's closer to that three point seven there. That we spoke about, so then, so then just to address them. Um, maybe I'll just touch on how the F T E.
I just got confused on that, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Is that really two, two positions then? It's not really one.
It it's it's one, two, two F T Es. Yeah, so how how that F T E target is set, as we we tend to, we look at the history of what's been happening in the detachment, and what of those special. We've been looking like, you know, and so looking back a couple of years, like like was mentioned, you haven't been at the full complement of nineteen working F T Es, it's. It's ranged from sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, somewhere around that mark. I think ending the last fiscal year, we were just at about sixteen point eight two. So starting year at seventeen F T Es was a reasonable projection. Depending on what position you're filling, you know, it's like that's increased to eighteen potentially in the next fiscal year, and so that's how that plan was built. That that target is something that can be set, obviously, through through your inputs and the conversations here. And which I know, of course, will will impact. Will impact the budget reductions. In terms of leaving those positions vacant, yes, that is something you can do, um it's it's been done in other communities. Uh, so you essentially you could freeze a position, two positions, whatever that looks like, and we would hold that as a. Freezing a position rather than eliminating a position. Creates some flexibility with the in question as well to allow for staffing, you know. Uh, say transfers, if you have a member coming in, someone else, only it allows for that flexibility to. So utilize those boxes on the org chart per se rather than. Resulted in F T E level, that's a lot lower. That makes sense. By holding a couple of positions vacant, there is. Some of the other implications can have your accommodation, uh so any, they're they're building cost sharing could be slightly impacted by. Rather than eliminating the positions and the positions just been frozen, the ratios of payments are gonna be impacted there, that's probably one of the biggest things.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna touch on that a little bit further, um so. When you, when you look at uh. This discussion, I mean, this discussion should be happening on an annual basis. Your point about the cost of policing is a real issue. Um, unfortunately, as as a servant provider, we have zero, zero charge ability to control those costs, those costs. Are burdened onto us as far as providing that kind of a service. It's not something that we can turn around to, um you know, this sex assault victim. Doesn't deserve to have their DNA analyzed here. Because we're, we don't think it's important enough, well, that's not right, the we do a sex assault, DNA should be examined at at all times. But that comes at a cost, and that's the way the world is now, everybody wants to charge uh for something. And unfortunately, we bear the brunt of it. There's nothing we do in policing to gain money back. Right, there's nothing that we can charge out and say, oh yeah, that's now going into our coffers and going somewhere else. Our cost of policing is a direct relation to the cost imposed on us to do that services, whether it be. Salary dollars that are put out because of their collective agreements that everybody has to to now deal with. To the cost of investigations, um our cost of investigations are skyrocketing. Because of technology changes. We don't have a choice in that. We need to have certain things meeting standard now that we didn't have fifteen, twenty years ago. And that's something that we just now have to deal with. And unfortunately, and I I I'm a taxpayer, I don't like to see my taxes go up. No matter what you other, but that's, that's how our service is funded, is through taxes. Through the communities, through the 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 uh people we serve. And so as a result, it does get carried on to our communities, and like I said, it's it's not what I wanna see. But it's unfortunate the system that we live in, so when we look at our costs. We can share as much as we can of the other other costs, these are the true cost of policing. We can show you that our investigational costs are continually to to skyrocket around technology. And if we could find a way, and I'd love to hear it, if there's a way we can. Tackle that differently, I'd like to know that, because it's the last thing we wanna do is tackle those additional costs on. But I can share with you story after story of where those costs impact investigations. Give me an example, I come from B C, I did a lot of work in B C for many years. In B C, we have this piece of equipment called a celebrate. Many of our detachment commanders have been able to burden the cost of that buying that equipment. It's a very high tech piece of equipment that allows us to advance investigations. Feeling with certain uh computerized equipment. In Alberta, this equipment isn't as widely available, it isn't widely available. There's challenges around getting it through the court systems, but there's an investigative tool that's very expensive. We can't just advance in our investigations and do some of our investigation, because there's challenges on the court. The court systems are looking at that, they're accepting that. We have a different judicial process here in some aspects. So here's an example of a tool, we're talking this tool is like roughly twenty thousand dollars U S for this one tool. Plus the training that goes with it. Those costs are not burdened by your community, they'd be burdened by the division. As we move forward with this, some of this technology, but to advance that technology. We need the crowns to be on board with it, judicial process to be on board with it, and then we need to be able to access that, train our members to be able to use that equipment. Just it's getting more and more expensive. But it's now needed in today's world to be able to advance those investigations. Everybody's got a phone, I heard you guys talking about it earlier, but setting the ringers off, we all have phones, and there's evidence on those phones. We have computers, there's evidence on those tablets, we need to build that advanced those investigations. Technology is now part of that to advance it, and it comes at a high price. I mentioned D N A, there's another area that is just skyrocketing, the cost to do D N A analysis. So I'm just, I'm just trying to point point out there that the cost of policing, as much as uh. We would like to try to reduce those costs, we don't, we want to investigate to the best standard possible. To ensure that we're providing the best service to our communities. And that means we're looking at options to be able to provide that, what technology is out there? What is there we can do differently in regards to these investigations to ensure that we have the most. Uh, possible and best outcomes in our investigations, that that's what drives us, is our investigations. And I just wanna throw something out there that uh no matter what decision John has in regards to the the outcomes of of. Number of positions in the F T E tally. You always have to balance between what you have from a from a financial component to it and your service delivery, what is it you. As a community are willing to accept. Uh, for your community from a service delivery. Any reduction is going to impact service. Any reduction is going to impact service. But where does that, where does that balancing act come out? I've worked in communities where there's a number of frozen positions, hard vacancies. And the community's hurting because of it, they can't do that proactive leasing. The call about, hey, you got so and so down the streets, a drug dealer, oh yeah, great, all we're doing is trying to react and call, we don't have the time to deal with that. Then I've been other communities where there there's lots of extra resources. And they're able to do all this proactive work, it's that balancing act. And that's unfortunately where you as a community uh have to decide what. What is it you want from the funding versus a service delivery, where that balancing act comes in for you? Where are the service providers, we're gonna try to provide the best service possible in whatever you end up.
I don't follow up to the hard vacancy question, just to clarify.
Go ahead.
So we can uh call it threes, uh two positions and save the same amount of money as we would if we permanently got rid of two positions. And that would still provide us with a little bit more flexibility. So the answer?
Yeah, 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 because it's 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 about that working F T, that working F T figure that. That is used and fed into the financial plan for the year, that that's that key figure, so whether it's. You have twenty boxes, I mean, leave three vacant, right, like it's that working F T that that's. That's the key figure, that may, it will likely fluctuate throughout the year based on special needs and and what happens there. If a member gets injured, you know, your working F T might reduce that below the plan because of the result of entry, but.
And getting that position back would be easier than if we permanently got rid.
So down the road, you wanted to increase your F T compliment back to say eighteen or go to nineteen. You've already got the boxes there that you can now, as part of the financial plan, you can say, yes, we can. Afford eighteen, so please proceed with building eighteen positions rather than.
Thanks.
And and we do have, if I may, we do have some communities who who do say that to us, right? Is, you know, we wanna keep our bird F T E bird, so. Uh, that utilization at this level, and yes, it's not to the number of positions on on the books. But we do wanna keep it to that, which does kind of what you're talking about, allows for. You know, the fluctuation, if you do wanna increase, it's much easier, but also it allows for those. Easier management if it ends and ends, because you can't predict if somebody's gonna go uh off duty sick or get injured or. Or have you, uh what have you, right, so you can also manage kind of, okay, we know we're, you know, you're saying to us. We don't, we wanna be built to seventeen at a max, then we can, you know. Sort of manage back and forth and see, oh, we're at about seventeen, you you end the year at seventeen, but. You might say a little up and a little down, and we're able to sort of navigate those ex and blows of of H R. If you do that option.
If I may add, just to uh maybe address or speak to some of the question about corporal versus constable or whatever that rank is. I think I touched on it too in uh in terms of the classification, but the existing organizational structure will be based on that position. The current position establishment, if you were into the positions that could have an impact on the organizational structure.
Good. Hey, um, I'm next in in queue and and I guess I appreciate the comments on the balance, and I think as I talk to. Uh, elected officials around the province, that's the question right now, is it's. Playgrounds, policing, and how much policing, and where are we safe and not safe, so. It's a, this is a, this is a really tough question, so I appreciate you coming today, because. This, for me personally, this is the first time I I've actually had this holistic discussion, but um I have a follow up question. So that three hundred thousand dollar savings that we've talked about a couple of times now. Is from plan, not from actual billing, that's the difference, is that correct? Okay, thank you, uh Counselor Race?
Thank you, sir, so. If hypothetically, if we said we're um. We have a full complement of nineteen, we wanna stay or fill seventeen positions and have two vacant. Or. Whatever you guys are calling them, do we have to enter into our existing contract to do that? So I don't think we are increasing or decreasing. So to do this hypothetically. What would it take and how long?
It's from the communication perspective, I think it's that written confirmation of, you know, this is our affordable working F T E target, please. Operate with that or or raise two concessions or whatever that looks like and then from there.
Yeah, technically, you're you're at that now. Right, you have nineteen positions, um our target for this fiscal year is seventeen. And we're trending at sixteen point eight, I believe, right? Um, whereas I think previous years it was target was eighteen, so we're already at that now. And so now take that and and describe now, what do you see around the community from the police and their availability and so forth, right? And your and what your community uh input is back to you, um reducing it. Any further, then that's where the impact may be, so we're we're sitting here right now, and almost that's exact seventeen now.
I just add one thing to this. Okay, um. Okay, so with seventeen, we have um proactivity at fifty six percent in around there, and that's great. Our um case load is up seven hundred, that's super. So. Falling below that would only.
And vacancies happen very easily, like if a member headed up to high level. And so. The member that may be coming in, stuck, and they find a member that wants to come in. He's from the Duke and it takes eight months to sell a house, well, that position is blocked for that member for eight months. So um so those those, that's how things change so fast. So if we wanted, if you guys decided that you wanted to keep that position vacant. And the member going to high level leaves the position and it just wouldn't get filled, so. Can I say in six months that would be gone, I don't know when he would be going to high level. If I had to make an estimation, within four months, he would be going to high level. So that's how, that's how fast, that's how. So that's how, that's how fast, that's how how easy, I guess, it would be. But we also have to remember that if we're operating at seventeen. Where is? And and I end up getting my next member who's going to high level and he leaves and that next member can't come in for eight months. Well, now I'm done to sixteen, and then I get an injury and now I'm down to fifteen, and then I have a pat leave, which is. Very realistic that three members during between transfer, pat leave and injuries or or whatnot. Now I'm down to fifty. So now from nineteen, I'm down to fifteen and I have to find four spots. That I can take members from, which in turn, we end up with the burnout because I need overtime. To fill those spots in order to maintain the schedule that the residents of Hinton are used to. Um. And burnout is very much a real thing in policing and it's very hard to come back from burnout, once you are. Burnt out, you don't want to reengage in the community, you don't want to be part of that detachment, you want to move and start over. And then we lose all the training that we've put into the member, we've lost. We've lost a family from our community. So there's a lot of ripple effect, I guess, um so it's easy to say, okay, let's maintain it at seventeen. I don't know what next week's going to give me, I don't know what transfers are going to be coming in or going out. And I encourage senior members to move in, right, I I I like the balance between the recruits. But I may be told I get a recruit in four months. Uh perhaps maybe something happened at depot and he gets back to for another three months, no, now I don't have a recruit for seven months. And he's got that position, so that's how changes so fast.
I have just a quick question on municipal versus provincial. So I I noticed in this report, we have nineteen municipal and three provincial, other areas have. Thirteen municipal and eighteen provincial, is that because of allowing us something to cover or? Where do those numbers come from?
So I think the best way to answer that actually is for maybe Narmine to talk a little bit about the workload analysis that you. Do and how like, so. So we on the provincial side, based on the factors that Narmine will talk about, we allocate resources, the number of resources needed. For that area and it's based on the workload, so Narmine, if you wanna just maybe touch on the factors that go into making that decision.
Yeah, for sure, so as I as I talked about um. The workload and the proactive availability are two of the indicators, but um we also look at. Um metrics including um criminal code files, the number of files per police officer. Um the crime severity index, the criminal code per thousand population. Um and the police to population ratio, and so hint and provincial detachment um. Taking all of those different metrics into consideration. Um that the provincial complement is assessed at requiring um three police officers. Uh as being sufficient to cover off um. You know, all of the the workload and the calls for service. Um ensuring that there's sufficient time available for proactive policing um. As well as just in in recognition of uh the number of. Criminal code files that are in that provincial detachment area, um the population in that area. All of those factors kind of help us to determine that three positions is what's needed at the provincial detachment level. Um. And I I think that um Chris had had alluded to the post detachment. Um that Hinton does operate as a post, and so what some of the benefits of the post is that the provincial and municipal. Um police officers work together and um. Find some efficiencies in policing, supporting that um shift schedule that allows for police officers to be scheduled. Um around the clock, um and so that is something that because of the. The relatively lower numbers of criminal code files and the lesser population. Um the lower levels of crime rate, all of those sorts of things, um the Hinton provincial members are able to. Um work in partnership with the municipal members to just offer um more cohesive, comprehensive. Policing services to all of the Hinton geographic area.
Three sounds like a a real um plus to us, it's it's good.
Because it is based on actually what's happening, you're primed, right?
Can I just go follow up for clarification? If three are needed, uh how come four are assigned? On page sixteen, it says comment of the three established positions for currently working. There's one with two officers assigned to it, so if we only need three, why did we assign four?
I can't speak to that. Um so from the district perspective, uh we have challenges on the provincial side and remember our detachments with resources. Like Charlotte mentioned earlier, staffing is a huge challenge for us, a lot of our detachments. Um are struggling and trying to entice members to go there. And we have experienced a number of our detachments where they just don't have sufficient resources. And to meet the bare minimum there, and so we need to look at where can we get those resources to help out those detachments. And so um the the fourth body here is a direct result of of that need. I authorized a fourth additional person to be provided on the provincial side. To help us in other detachment areas nearby, so Jasper seen that benefit of having that those those shifts built. By Hinton. Grand Cash is another one by Hinton. So that provincial person, we're taking that on and saying, okay, you're getting that benefit about having uh that individual working and living in your community. But they're going out and helping out some of our other detachments. So that's where the fourth position is coming from.
So that fourth position is not one of the nineteen plus three, it's in addition to that.
Just an addition.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Uh councillor Ross.
Yeah, number of questions coming up, but uh. Uh I I'm gonna start with my original and then I'll get back in the queue if there is a. O T, um we all, as we know, uh uh overtime, we know that in our own organization, right, is that, you know. Workloads stay the same or increase and as soon as we reduce, you know, we're gonna see more O T. Um currently, right now, uh the detachment in hinted, how are we? With O T compared to say equivalent uh organizations right now. Uh you know, i- any thoughts on that particularly?
You can probably answer. I know we, I don't think people those are unrestricted, that's something we could look at, but um it. Predicting the overtime, it can be very unpredictable on the activity and the, I can kind of.
Yeah, sorry, so just just with my role right now, having eight different detachments that I'm supporting. I do see a direct correlation with vacancies and the amount of overtime and and oper- operational readiness is what we call it. Those situations where members are on call, uh that increases, the the more vacancies that we have. You see an increase of correlation with increased overtime.
So based on that, if I may, so if we were to currently right now with having seventeen members, granted those two members don't really get filled. But if we were to reduce it, you know, I mean, there's a chance that our overtime hours may drastically potentially. Or I shouldn't say drastically, I don't want to use that word, but potentially could go up because uh I mean. Uh you you you're still doing the work of that seventeen and we reduce it, so I guess. That's where I'm at thinking, cuz O T is is a big expense and that comes on us, uh you know, as and it goes to that service level that you were talking about earlier.
You don't mind, I I you guarantee your overtime is gonna go up. How much is gonna have so many other variables, variables to it, um. How many vacancies you have, how many people are off for other special leave, medical issues, um transfers. Those are all gonna have those impacts on the overtime, um right now, um their situation is is. One picture. Six months from now, when you have that individual that's transferred to high level and you have uh two more people on the path, maybe whatever. Now your overtime issue changes dramatically, so um the less resources you have initially. The more you're gonna be calling upon that overtime as you go down the line. Okay, and so you're, you can guarantee there's gonna be an increase, we just can't predict. You know, it's gonna be a two percent increase or a twenty percent increase, right, because of the the variable, sir.
I can say one more thing.
I can I can mention also, overtime is something that I I monitor quite well. Um because there is a direct correlation with burnout with overtime, right, so we can offer overtime. And it's money, but uh the repercussions of burnout, we can't. Like you can't even get a dollar bill on that, um so I really monitor that and it goes back to having a. Um. A very positive working environment that we are such a team in the detachment that members are more than happy to switch shifts and say, you know what? They need more help on night shift, I'll switch my shift to night shift, we don't need the overtime. Because people are, it's just a team atmosphere, everybody is there to, I guess for the greater good, I guess it, I don't wanna be cliche, but that's what it is. It's frontline policing and we're. That's what we're there for, so we don't see the overtime and I see all the claims that go through the detachment, so. I guess I'll I'll read it back.
I could just say one more was quick and then.
Related to this, uh.
I guess I'm, I was just gonna, nevermind, okay.
Okay, um Mayor Michaels, thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't know how to say this, uh I do wanna thank Staff Sergeant. Uh Frag mentee.
Frag mentee, yeah.
Bring, okay, good, getting better. It's a tough one.
I know.
Um. You you spoke about the, let's say you you're you're downforce. People. Because of mat leaves or other reasons. So I'm starting to have a concern that if you freeze and you can't fill those two. The, let's say you're, if there's four people away, so now you're 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 running at thirteen people max. I wanna avoid that for sure, I I don't know where I stand, I physically wanna deal with stuff. Um is there any budgetary impacts, like do we? Do, or what I what I'm getting to is, could we? Give direction hypothetically to just not pay for more than seventeen temporarily. So it gives you the flexibility that if four people are down, you don't have to come back to us. But you can go up to paying seventeen. And give you that flexibility, cuz I don't wanna be in a position where you're down four, we freeze two. That's down six and then you're starting to get these other things, so is there uh an alternative to? Give you the flexibility that we wanna make sure that we're not paying more than seventeen, but then you could. Fill the other positions that are gone for other reasons without coming to us, is that?
I'll I'll let Rita answer the money part of things, but I I feel as though. We have such a great working relationship with town and council as well as with with Mac, I meet with him. A couple of times a week so that he's able to understand where we are, so staffing levels were to take a change. Um it is something that's a timely thing that I can show to Mac and say, okay, this is what I run into, I'm going to. So that when you guys see that change in your bill, it's not, wow, I I wish we would have known about this. We, you guys already would know about it, so I um. So the answer is yes, I just wanted to say that we, our relationship has to remain open so that it can express. The the timeliness of those changes that may come up because workplace injuries happen instantly and then I down member right there.
I could just add, so in that specific scenario that you ran, where yeah, we wanna freeze the two and then we. Unforeseen, we have three or four that that go down, it's not as easy as just picking up the full load to fill those two. Like that that depends on recruiting, staffing, transactions, where they're coming from, so it's. It's not something that would happen overnight, can we do it, yes, but then I again, I wouldn't be able to guarantee. How long that position will run vacant cuz it all depends on whether we can get a grand new member for training or a transfer in from another community.
So can I uh follow up on uh Staff Sergeant's comments? Um the reason I ask that, and and I I appreciate there's a great relationship. But I think there's an understanding of from council, and I I may be wrong, that if you freeze two, you'd have to come back to us. And that's what I'm trying to avoid. Uh so it's not a conversation with Mac, that's why I'm, I wanna give you guys solutions where. You can always be paying up to seventeen and then if it's a freeze of two, you lose four, I think this council is under the, you'd have to come to us, I don't. I'm trying to avoid that. So I apologize if I if I said it uh not overly clear before, but uh your 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 reply kind of. Yeah, I'm struggling.
No, I guess that's that's good that we have that, um I guess that we have your confidence in that, uh all that superintendent work kind of explained a bit more.
So as I mentioned earlier, on an annual basis, this discussion should be happening. With Michelle on what your what your desire, what your what your needs are in the community. Are you, are your policing needs meeting the needs of what you see in your community? So that discussion that you just talked about, uh. Your worship uh saying, okay, well, you know what, based on everything that's going on, we are comfortable with the target of seventeen for this fiscal year. You say that and that's laid out and that's what we aim to hit all year long is seventeen. Okay, if things are really good, you wanna see more police out there and say, okay, we would like to see your target of eighteen going forward for this next fiscal year. Okay, then that's what we hit the target on, you're not getting into those freezing and unfreezing. Then we're able to manage to that level of what that target is, and so right now the target. Um however, we came to it was seventeen, so we're trying to manage to that seventeen mark, which is where we're sitting at sixteen point eight. So it's just setting that target every year and in a general discussion like this is all that needs to happen, is doesn't it need to be a full-on? Motion in that in that regard, it just needs to be a discussion, where where council wants to see the level of placing goes. If you're getting into freezing positions, that's that is more formal. And it does take a little more work, like Chris says. Filling those positions takes a lot more effort from my part because it's all of a sudden now we gotta start acting this. And right now I can tell you uh with the uh recruiting processes that around policing. Across North America, recruiting is. Very, very challenging. And so if we say tomorrow we need to get a cadet in here, we might be in the in the holding pattern for a while. And so we we need to make sure we have time to manage. And that's what you're offering your worship is is exactly the best way to go forward. From my perspective, cuz that gives us the ability to manage to a set target versus all of a sudden now we have to come up with. Okay, now we gotta find four more people to come here.
If I I can just add from the financial perspective. Yeah, so setting that working F T target is kinda from my perspective, the number one thing as part of your forecast and planning your budget for the year. Knowing what that is, salary and those associated indirect costs are typically the largest. Components of the placing budget, and so setting that F T E target is is gonna be key in in determining what that financial level is. Um we are really working to enhance um reporting and the things that we're doing to support you and. And knowing what's going on and helping to make those decisions, so. Um we should look at this somewhere, here what I just received, uh a period seven reports, we're now starting to do month reports rather than just a regular. Financial update, so now seeing the monthly report, you'll you'll start to see, here's what your F T E is at, here's what it's at. You'll see that on that ongoing basis, so if you, you know, if you were ever to trend above the seventeen. We can see that right away and conversely, if you're trending low, we can see that too, which can then help you anticipate where you might end up at that point here. And let that file go back.
Thanks, okay, um I'm I'm next in queue and I guess I'm confused again because uh. Nineteen, two missing, fifteen, I think you said, if we reduce two, we're going to thirteen, so to be clear. Um we have nineteen positions and we're actually operating with seventeen positions, is that correct? It's not fifteen, like the two that are missing, if those positions were to be frozen, we would have seventeen members, correct?
Yes, we're missing a sergeant, we're missing a member in G I. That those positions are currently vacant.
Okay, that's that's helpful, thank you, and then I guess my question is um. And it was alluded to earlier and it's and it's really the challenge is that thirty percent increase over the last couple of years, thirty some. And that, I think, and this is a is a question to administration, or maybe you could answer, that's with seventeen positions in place, is that correct? Cuz I don't think we've employed nineteen, so those increases would have been with seventeen positions, is that correct?
It it would be with whatever you had working.
But that's, I'm asking, so my understanding is, is it, did we build for seventeen?
About seventeen.
About seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah, and and the forecast for next year is based on eighteen F T, so so some things like the equipment forecast, though, um. Until we know details of, for example, the pistol, obviously, every frontline member would would get a pistol, but some of the items. You know, maybe per per detachment, or maybe you need two per detachment, uh this size, so there's some variability and and some of that and how that feeds into the cost. Yeah, but it but it's based on, sorry, what that that F T is, yeah.
Okay, thank you, uh councillor Ross.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, um a question came popped up, I believe during the um uh convention and that was on. Um what is a number for say? Um, what is a number for safer communities? Uh, there was this, I talk about that. I don't know if that's something you guys have at the top because we were talking about, you know, what number for the town of Hinton. Is considered that would be a safer community, did that?
Yeah, I recall that, that was a discussion, I mean, um, that's a real hard thing to really put a number, uh, put a number to what can be safe. When you look at all the, the, uh, aspects around, um, the community. When you look at our crime severity index, your violent crime severity index, those are typically good indicators of the crime in the community. Um, but it doesn't necessarily mean his community is unsafe because you got high crime. You have a major highway that goes through the community that has a lot of impact on your community from a primary. Doesn't mean the community is unsafe. So it's hard to say that the, the, the safe community is based on a certain number. You have to really look at what other aspects of the community are there to, to support that, that safe community perspective. Um, from, from my experience, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, things like, okay, what's your capacity in your community to do proactive work? To, to be able to go out there and, and target those probable offenders in the community, those prolific offenders in the community. If you're dealing with a, uh, force that is, uh, on the smaller side, their capacity is much smaller. To go to go people, uh, proactive work. Whereas if you have, uh, the more robust, uh, organization, you may be doing a lot more pro, proactive work. So it really comes down to your community, what you're, what you're willing to accept from a safety perspective. Uh, but I, I'm sorry, but I, putting a number to it is really, really difficult to go to say, you know. If you're at seventy-five, you're a great community, you're safe. Well, does that mean seventy is not a good community? Right? So in the, what value you use, it really is, is really difficult to go put value to.
Thank you.
Could I ask a follow up?
Go ahead.
You gave us, uh, an option that had a seven member reduction. Uh, you would recommend a reduction that was unsafe, would you?
I don't know why, she nor me, you might be able to speak to where that, uh, numbers come in.
Yeah, so one of the questions that we received, um, in preparing this report. Was to provide some guidance on what would be the, the minimum policing, um. Like the lowest number that we could go down to and as, as Blake talked about. Um, there are a number of factors that, that go into this, um. And we did say that based on just the metrics that I spoke to before, things like crime severity index, um. Criminal code files in the community, uh, workload, proactive availability, all of those, um, metrics. Uh, we could not fall below seven. Um, we cannot fall, we cannot decrease by more than seven members without, um. You know, very severely impacting, um, the community. But again, at that seven member reduction, um, there would be service level considerations that would need to be taken into account. And all that this analysis looks at is just those metrics that I've mentioned. It doesn't look at things like community engagement or, um, crime reduction activities that have been identified as a priority. It doesn't speak to, um, really ensuring that prolific offenders, um, are addressed appropriately in the community. Um, it really speaks to what we know the past five years with the data around what your. Um, criminal code has been, what the nine-one-one calls, um, those, those really, um. Those key metrics, that's what we've looked at. And again, it's looking at five years of data, um, in the past. Um, we did note that there was a, there was a murder in the community in twenty twenty-one. Um, so those sorts of projections, we do not factor into determining what the appropriate level would be going into the future. We're really looking at what does the data to date indicate? And so that's where that reduction of seven is, is in response to a request from the community. Um, from Aaron Council to provide, um. What is the, the maximum number of resources that could be reduced? Um, and really, um, Shiloh as the detachment commander and the district, um, reps would be able to speak more. Um, appropriately around the service level reductions that would be, um, experienced with that level of reduction. And also around the vacancies, um, because this is, this is a reduction of seven positions off the org chart. It doesn't factor in, um, any of the vacancies that might be experienced due to, you know, maternity leaves or. Um, people being injured and off, off, um, frontline policing, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just looking at just those metrics.
Thanks.
Perfect segue cuz I think Mr. Murphy's got some.
Oh, wonderful. It's you actually address it right at the very end there. So we talked seven, reduction of seven positions. Again, that's assuming that we have no other vacancies, no illnesses, nobody going off for, for any reason. And so as soon as you start running into that, uh, she, she's basically saying that's the bare minimum right there. And in reality, I, I speak very frank here, I, over twenty-two years, I had nine days in a certain location. Where we were fully staffed to the position numbers. That is it. So in the majority of detachments, we're quite often operating at a number that is not quite at that total amount. Exact conversation, uh, with Mayor Michaels there and just having those ongoing conversations, uh, with the municipality and. And what your target is and what else, cuz we always are gonna have that fluctuation at all times. I do worry when we start freezing positions or eliminating positions because then we also have that buffer that we can't forecast. Which is again, the, the illnesses, uh, uh, injuries, pat leaves, mad leaves, uh, transfers.
And I think I can safely say that there's no stomach here for seven. I think really it's what are the goalposts from here to here.
So to, to help you make your decision on some of this stuff, I think we have to keep going back to what's the impact on the service. And I know we're talking a lot about the money side of it here and that's very, very important to assess, but I think we have to talk about, you know, if you reduce. One more over seventeen, if you go down to sixteen, what impact is that gonna do to your service delivery? You go down fourteen, fifteen, you drop seven, and I'm glad to hear that that's not really a desire. But, you know, twenty-four hour model is not gonna be able to be achieved with that many bodies because. You're not gonna have the, the capacity anymore, right? So what is the service delivery impacts? For every change in your, in your resourcing model. And that's something that, you know, every one of those has, has an impact. And there's gonna be a variance here. For example, um, one person taken off of the rotation. Where's that person coming from? Is it coming out of the watch? Well, now you have one watch that's shorter than the rest. Is that something, is that the best case scenario? Um, or do you take someone out in the G I unit and take them and, and make the G I unit run with less people? So then what impact does that have on the G I? And every one of those comes with, with, like I said, a service impact. And I don't think there's enough time for us to go through all those questions, those discussions, but there is that part of the discussion that really needs to be had as well. Okay, Councilor Ross?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, like, cuz that's exactly what I'm, you know, it's, it's not always about the dollars, it's about that service level. And I guess my, so my question to is, and I'm gonna preference this cuz I know with fire and we did this, that there is a. A reasonable, they, they look at how, what's the expectation of a response time? Uh, if I'm correct, is that something that the R C N P also look at is when a call is how? Long do, does it take to get to? Is there a reasonable expectation? Is that something you guys measure?
Yes, and nor me, you probably get the specifics for it, sir, but, uh, for party one, party two calls, there is a response time requirement that we look at. And it's, uh, we, we do track it for both municipal and provincial. Uh, exact, exact numbers I don't have, nor me, do you happen to have those?
I, I don't have those exact numbers, um, for what our, what our service level standards are. Um, however, I do have, um, in, in the package, there is. Information around the response times for, um, Hinton Provincial and Hinton, Hinton Municipal. Um, so those are on pages, uh, thirteen and sixteen of the report, so we do identify those. As well as, um, there is an explanation cuz there's two components, there's travel time and there's also response time. So travel time is essentially, um, I just wanna reference my. My report here, travel time is essentially the length of time required, um, for a police officer to attend a call for service. Once they've been dispatched and then the response time also factors in additional components. Um, such as, you know, depending on the call, um, there may be, uh, a longer time in the queue. Waiting for the nine-one-one operator to answer the call, uh, the length of the call, um. So providing that information to the nine-one-one operator, um, file maintenance, dispatching the file to a police officer, um. The police officer doing their duty of, you know, familiarizing with the file and conducting the initial checks. Inquiries and then the travel to the, to the location. So a number of different things go into those two, um, items.
Thank you. I guess the reason I'm asking that question is cuz it, it does boil down for me, service. And if you were to ask anybody in our, in, in our province right now about, you know, E M T services and are they adequate enough in the response time? I don't think anyone would say they are, uh, and it's because of that system, it's been a lot of different changes, stuff like that. You know, the, the last thing that people wanna do when they're calling the R C P is wait. Uh, and this is, I, I think really educational, not only for us, but as the community as well to, just to hear that too as well as is. How much time it takes from the time they call to the, it actually gets to the R C M P? And then the travel time there, I think a lot of people don't realize that, uh, that it's not, there's a lot of lag time in between. Uh, you know, so this is, for me, that's what I'm hearing is reducing means that prioritizing may start happening as well. I understand in other communities, they don't respond to all calls because they don't necessarily meet the criteria. Uh, and they don't have the, the people, the person power out there to respond to every call. My understanding is that Hinton does not work that way. Uh, they do respond to every call. It's created a, a better relationship with our community members as well and, and a feeling of security as well and safety and security. So, um, you know, I think that's what I'm hearing and I guess the other about service level. Is what I'm hearing also is that crime prevention, if we were to hypothetically reduce numbers and, you know, we have bike patrols. We have walk patrols, we have different ways of policing in our community that other communities don't have. Would that be things that we would lose potentially if we were to say reduce numbers and then with other vacancies and things like that? Would that we see be gone?
Well, uh, as I said at the beginning, frontline policing would be a priority. So we would. Uh, the service would change in regards to our community engagement. So it would be bike control that, it would be our, the phrase, it would be. That's, that's sort of thing we're more focused on the priority because we would have less focus work.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, and I have put myself back in queue cuz I can, um. And I guess on, on page nineteen of the report, where option one is reducing a member from seventeen to sixteen. I'm, I'm wrapping my head around the numbers. I mean. It's talking about that proactive, uh, availability moving from sixty-one fifty-eight percent. So that, that police officer would spend forty-two percent of their time responding to calls and fifty-eight percent of their time doing. Proactive work. I mean, is that fifty-eight percent number a number? I mean, when I look at the comparatives through communities, that's a number, that's a great number. Is that, is that a good number in policing?
That's a great number.
I'm gonna suggest that, uh, you know, again, I think there remains talked about this is based upon your chart. Um, as, as the numbers we have assigned positions, it does not take into account. The vacancies that come from being members O D S and so forth, and that's a part we can't predict, but, um. Fifty percent of proactive time is a good amount of time if all your positions are full. That's a good amount of time. That, that is a good number to work with and I, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Where the struggle comes is all our positions full. And a lot of our communities, that's where on paper, it looks like they should be, uh, doing a given amount of proactive twenty. But because of a lot of vacancies, because of a lot of members that are off, because of occupational stress injuries, they're burnt out. They're not, uh, being able to track the members there, so all they're getting is cadets, they're going through the training programs. They're not able to provide that in real time because of that, those gaps.
Yeah, I think it's important to know in this report that is if every other position is filled with a working member. Uh, that's where we get those, uh, fifty-seven percent or fifty percent, uh, in that ideal world where you wouldn't have anybody else off.
But I guess as a follow up then is, and I've heard it several times, that, that Hinton's sort of an appealing place to go to because of the workload. I mean, if you're presenting that kind of workload to, to, to members, it's gotta still be a pretty attractive place to come to in filling positions.
Yeah, I can speak from the district perspective, uh, I deal with all the promotions throughout the district. And, uh, Hinton is one place that is very appealing in all fronts. And so from a selection perspective, I'm getting to select from a good pool of individuals to come here. That's not the case for a majority of our district. It's a very, uh, big challenge to get their positions filled in other places. So, uh, your, your model that's being, uh, utilized in history now, it's very appealing to the members. The community obviously is very appealing and I think a lot of communities are looking and saying, what are they doing right? Can we do it?
I recently received a call from staffing in regards to the member that's going up to high level because we have a four-year commitment. And every recruit that does come here or, uh, comes here as a subsequent detachment, it's a four-year commitment that you are, you are to stay. And there's, um, experienced members waiting to get into Hinton. So that, that speaks volumes about the, the place that we have here and the, the detachment, the morale. Because they get that information from the members who are working here. They call it night shift and say, how is it? Because if morale is not there, they don't work. It's not, it's not worth it. The burnout is there, they don't, they don't want that, right? They'll go to a different detachment where they can get the like work-life balance. So it's extremely appealing to, uh, to experienced members.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Michaels. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this was mentioned before, but a lot of stuff we talked a lot. Twenty twenty-three is budgeted at how many? Seventeen or eighteen?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry.
Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four is budgeted.
But it's forecast at eighteen FTEs.
Okay.
And current year is twenty-two, twenty-three is forecast at seventeen.
Okay, perfect. Uh, sorry, uh, what was the last thing you said?
So the current fiscal year, uh, twenty, two thousand twenty-two, two twenty.
Yeah. It's, it's something, okay, awesome, thank you.
May I?
Please.
When you say the current fiscal year, are you talking ours or yours?
Uh, ours, so then basically, uh, so you've got the, the three quarters. Sorry, I don't know what's called investment, yeah.
Is that April, though?
Yes, yeah, yes, April wins, starts the new fiscal.
So, thanks a lot. So if, if there was direction. And I'm trying to flush all the options. If there was directions to change the, that working number for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four to be seventeen. We would essentially see that three hundred thousand dollar saving.
To, to seventeen, cuz it's right at eighteen right now. So to seventeen, it would bring down about half of us. So the three twenty-seven of us, that's identified in table fourteen would be about half of that for one number. When you reduce to sixteen, we'd see that.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't, it's a bit confusing.
So it'd be one fifty-ish, from, from our municipal cost, maybe it'd be about one fifty? If we gave direction to drop that, uh, service level from our, our budgeting level of eighteen to seventeen.
Yeah.
Ballpark one fifty.
Ballpark, yeah.
I'll say, thank you.
A follow up again, so I understand cuz it, it wouldn't be a reduction, it'd be a hundred and fifty thousand we wouldn't spend. So there would be no reduction off of what we've been spending, correct?
Correct, no reduction to what has been spent currently, but, yeah, the, it's a forecast that's developed and then we only value for what's actually materialized.
Okay.
So it would be a reduction in expected spending in the upcoming year. Counselor Ross?
Yeah, I guess it's important I, I ask this question now, just in case later we have this conversation all around this. Hard vacancy, freezing vacancy, whatever. Uh, you said that there was some communities that do that. Um, I'm curious as to what is the criteria then? That all of a sudden, right? Like, it's one thing to say we're gonna freeze it, but then. Who sets that criteria? How does that work? You know, cuz, you know, uh, my idea of what is criteria might be different than someone else's. But how does that work to then lift that so that we can fill that position?
Yeah, so I think it's really through these types of conversations again. It should be happening annually as we develop the multi-financial plan, engaging with you to say, you know, really. Uh, what do you want your target F T E to be? So seventeen, eighteen, whatever you want it to be, right? And I think when we say freezing, we're actually talking about an internal function so that we don't put somebody in a position. Um, accidentally, we sort of freeze for us so that we don't accidentally have somebody in a position. Have somebody in a position and then you get a bill that's bigger than, than we agreed to around that. Um, and then really that adjustment is a, is a conversation. Uh, with your commander and then direction into us, it may take time to staff a position back up, right? For all the natural reasons, but really this is like, like you're determining your service level. Um, whereas if you were to, uh, eliminate positions, what happens is you write a letter. Uh, saying, you know, to the government again, to say we're reducing, right? Our position and they come back and say, they actually come to us and say, you know. Do you guys have concerns with this reduction of one position? We say yes, we say no. Um, and then they come back and confirm that it leaves your org. Or chart, if you wanted to put that position back on, then you would have to write a letter back to the public safety minister. Asking for an additional position that takes some time. And then contractually, it'll, you know, there's sort of that piece in the agreement that it takes a year, it may take up to a year of bill, right? So, yeah, so just sort of us knowing, you know, your target is seventeen or your target is eighteen. And then internally, the sort of function is, you know, don't exceed this, right? You know, we watch your things ebb and flow, but are we still forecasting to land at the end of the year at your seventeen? Um, yeah, so that's, does that make it or there?
Could I ask you a follow-up for clarity? So if we set a working target, we could budget on that working target. There'd be enough certainty that we could budget on that working target.
Yeah, and we would, I, right, so there we would, we're working towards, as Rita sort of spoke to you, I think. Um, this conversation is probably long overdue. And we've probably, uh, well, I, I shouldn't say probably, I know we haven't, for working down. We haven't been, um, as strong at communicating as frequently with communities as we should be. So sharing information with you guys to help you understand what's happening. So for, um, with the forecast, so for example, um, we've been anticipating or forecasting the replacement for the pistols. For a number of years now, and it has not materialized. So we need to be communicating that to you so that you know that today we're, we aren't expecting to spend here. You know, maybe, you know, at the end of the day, this is what we're expecting our bill to be. Maybe we do want to spend a little bit more support or what have you, right? So we're working towards enhancing that frequency as well as sort of breadth of communication with communities. So.
Well, I think the new contract's got everybody on this side of the table way more focused on.
Oh, hundred, you know what? And, and I really will say that I appreciate, because I, I can imagine the difficult challenge that you have, right? Um, that you're facing in terms of our rising costs. And I really appreciate the, the questions coming our way because it allows us to give you this information and be responsive. So you can make the right decisions for your communities.
CEO Panasic, did I see your finger go up? Do you have a question?
Uh, yes, I did. It was partially answered, but just on the freezing of positions, just to one clear. Um, essentially, we said we wanted to freeze two positions. Um, those would just remain as reserve positions that then we could say if somebody went off on paternity leave for eighteen months, we could look at filling that. But I also heard that there was a, uh. Filling these positions is very difficult for the R C M P so operationally. With these, we'll, I'll call them reserved positions, would you be able to use those effectively to actually meet those targets? Or would we be looking at vacancies i- in lots of cases, just operationally speaking?
I'm going to suggest that maybe we use a term, terminology about a funded position versus freezing. So that we talk about, okay, what is the funding, number of positions you want to have for this fiscal year, right? And so if seventeen is that number, we will then manage throughout the year to be as close to that number. At all times. So we know, so, you know, so I was able to look and say, okay, I got this member transferring up to high level. She's now already dealing with making sure she's got a backfill in the works to make sure that she's staying as close to possible at seventeen. Okay, and so that management of it becomes a lot more, um, possible to make sure we're around that level a lot closer. If we have to go and say, okay, now we've got to try to get, and we've got the authority to go up one more position. We now have to go through that process to get that one more position, not necessarily authorized, but just built. So that process, we're behind the eight ball as far as the staffing of it. And that's where we, you know, managing it, where you know in front of events is a lot more maintainable versus. Trying to say, okay, all of a sudden you've got the green light to get one more. Okay, great, that's awesome. But we have a process to go through to get that position in, so there's going to be delay. So whatever that number is for funded conditions every year. Let Shallow know that when it started to hear, she's able to manage it throughout your way more easier than all of a sudden, hey, here's another position.
Thank you, and I, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, can I ask one follow-up? What, what's the average vacancy rate that we have? Is it continually around ten percent and as we, or if we did decide to reduce the, the staffing complement, does that increase the vacancy rates?
So I can speak to that, what we're experiencing right now, our vacancy rate. Um, as, at the whole provincial R C P level, not specific to, uh, like, Hinton. Um, is around three and a half to four percent. Um, if you were to factor in our soft vacancies, we see that going. Going up a bit, but when you talk about our vacancies, it's around three and a half to four percent as an average right now.
And I see a hand up on the screen.
Yeah, and I apologize for interrupting the discussion, but I just wanted to alert folks that. We do need to step off the call due to a, a, a pre-existing commitment that I was not able to change. Um, so if there are any additional workload or, um, questions around, um, the metrics. That district or detachment are not able to answer. Um, I'll connect with Shallow tomorrow to see if there was, there was anything that I needed to provide as a follow-up to today's meeting. Um, so great discussion. I've really enjoyed, um, being part of it and I wish I could stay for the duration of it.
I, I appreciate your input to this point, so thanks very much for, for joining us. And, uh, the hands aren't flying up quite so quickly, so I think much of it's been covered anyhow, so thank you.
Thanks. Take care, everyone.
It's true. If you want to follow up a bit more about the vacancy side of it, so, um. You know, there's been significant, uh, impact and, and, you know, COVID's impacted a number of, uh, people in a number of organizations. Well, we, uh, as well have seen that across the board. And, uh, you know, when I look at across our district. Uh, with our vacancy patterns, uh, we have significant challenges in a number of our attachment to vacancies. On the soft vacancy side, and that's a lot contributed to the workload that those members are going through and the burnout that's happening to those. Members in those communities. Um, and, you know, I, it's, it's hard to be able to put a direct number to exactly, you know. Four percent or five percent vacancy, but some of our attachments, I'm going to suggest a portion of ten percent vacant on the soft vacancies. Uh, because of the burnout factor. And, and that, you know, the workloads that are in front of our members in those higher call volume areas. And so we're trying to find that balance is very challenging, um. When I look at, uh, uh, some of our, um. Challenges around trying to attract people to different places, like Shallow mentioned is. When you're looking at the ability to go and do proactive work, that's attractive to me. We don't, we, we join this organization to be least of us because we want to put bad guys in, in jail. We want, we want to do that, the right thing. Well, if you don't have time to go and do some of this proactive work, that actually becomes a burnout part of it. We want to go and view that proactive, you know, we'll catch an impaired driver on a Friday night, go, you know. Do that enforcement at school zone, take down that drug dealer. We want to go do those things. But if all we're doing is going call to call to call, we don't. And so that contributes to that burnout factor even more so. So finding that ability to be able to do that. I just want to point out that, that my burnout rate will increase when you have the lower numbers. And you will see an increase in that, which then will impact the vacancy part of it as well.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Oz?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate this part of the conversation because I, and what I'm hearing is hint in having the. Service level that we have is attractive that whereas compared to other communities that don't have that is not attracting. So that's in our favor, which I don't want to mess with personally. Um, you know, but a, another thing that I guess I want to bring up is, is just a, uh, i- is, is the safety part of it too, right? Is our members looking at too, like, you know, I mean, let's face it, you do a dangerous job. You're out there and, you know, and if the less members you have, the more, less likely you have other members to, to, to. Uh, attend calls with you as well. So that probably that factor, uh, is that part of, you know, what people are looking at as well. Uh, which I think, if I may, is also what our community members are also looking for. And a presence too, because my understanding too is, is that we see our members driving around a lot. Uh, whereas other communities, you don't see them as much. So, I mean, and that presence alone makes it look like there's more members here than there actually might be. Which is less attractive to those that we have to deal with, right? So, okay, so that's, that's good to, I, I appreciate that, that input because that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, it's really important to recognize that our, you know, our members are families. Um, they want to come to a community where it's safe for their family. And that's one of our struggles over members. They want to take their families to these locations. Right? And so it's, you know, we feel the impact as well for those high crime areas as far as getting people to go there. So it's benefit that the, we use light pink for our members.
So can I just, once, on that and then this?
Question?
Yeah, well, do you see then more places where they have separated families that versus Hinton? Like, they go off somewhere as a posting, but their family is living somewhere else. Do you see that more in other communities than you do so in, in Hinton? Yes, okay, awesome, thank you.
Uh.
Very much.
He was very patient. No, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, I apologize if it's been answered before. But we're running at about sixteen point eight from this year, from what I remember. The number was sixteen point eight. Why, uh, the targeted budgeted, uh, uh, eighteen? Difference of one point two, if we're rolling at sixteen point eight right now, why would we budget at eighteen?
It's, so the eighteen is for our, our next fiscal, um, so we, we developed that plan, right? And then there's, I think, a lot of comments around staffing, special needs and things like that, we, we can't predict, I know what's going to happen. So we developed that target, we developed the invoicing based on that, but then reality happens. Then transfers happen, special needs happen, all those things, and so that number gets adjusted. And so as we are coming up on, on your calendar year end or, or quarter three, um. We are looking at making those recommendations to the forecast to adjust for that, so that you're not being billed more.
Furthermore, I guess we do have a member on pat leave, so we do know exactly when he'll be coming back for the next year. Um, so that would be the increase on one member, um, but like I said. I already know of two or three members that are, we're going to have to go through a bit of a change. Uh, with members transferring out and transferring in, so.
So, if I mean, that was kind of my, my, my rationale that if there, if, if you're projecting that, shouldn't the target budget be a bit lower? Knowing that you're not going to be at eighteen anyways, right? Because if, if there's. Right? Because I think the conversation eventually is going to be, you either want to freeze one, you want to get rid of them. Or you want to set your target to sixteen or seventeen. I'll be honest, I think that's going to be the dialogue. So that's why I'm asking these questions of like, so. Why eighteen? Like, yes, I still struggle with why.
I think when the report was put out, um, we knew for sure a member was coming back. Um, I'm not sure when the report was done, we knew of the other transfers that are in place. But we knew for sure that December twentieth, we have another member back, so that will bump up our one member. So I guess more, uh, maybe more on concrete information that we had.
Okay, that makes sense, thanks. Yeah.
So as a follow-up, so I can understand then sixteen point eight is operationally where we're at, but the budget was seventy. Correct?
Correct.
And so there was a, there was a decision, a concrete decision to move to increase by one position. Because this, uh, member was coming back, is that?
Yeah, maybe. Well, I guess, I think it, it's also historically, so it's not just looking at one specific year. So when these reports, these forecasts are being done, it's looking at the previous five years, what, what have we typically been running at? As far as the municipal positions go, and it, it does fluctuate, it does vary, like that, they came up with eighteen based on that.
Thank you. Small follow-up. Please, uh, so maybe a silly question, but it might be part of our, our deliberation. Can you do half numbers? Could we set targets of seventeen and a half, sixteen and a halves or, uh? Uh, not, not to be.
You'd have to bring in a really short off.
You know, because of all the ebbs and flows, uh, it's never going to be seventeen or eighteen or, right? I get it why it's sixteen point eight, so could we set targets of seventeen and a half?
So I think that, uh, at the end of the day, that's when, you know, billing might work out to be right that way. But from a management perspective, I think that, uh, you will end up having some other gaps there because you can't staff a half position. Right? So we need a full position to staff it. So if, for example, we know this person is transferring up to high level. We know we have a position to fill, we will initiate that process to fill it. But if we're getting closer towards the end of the year and we only have half a position to fill. If we fill it with a full position, we're going to be going over. And so that's where we have to look at that from a management perspective. Can we actually manage half a position? For our organization, and right now, I don't think we can actually manage unless we start getting, you know, a whole new thing with private agreement and part-time employees.
So, so I think that, if I may, just, I think the distinction is between people and bodies and billing.
Exactly.
Right? Because of, and that's, and that's, I think, when we're talking about, um, eighteen. Yes, we're talking about people, but really we're talking about a bill of eighteen. Or at your bill likely will come in at around sixteen point eight, but there could have been eighteen people, right? And then some of them are in and some are out and some are in. So, so from a billing perspective, if that's where that conversation, you know, really that's where the decision's made. There's absolutely no, um, there's no problem in sort of setting a half target like that. Because we are talking about billing and then we would just manage from a billing perspective to say, okay. You have this many in, this many out, you know, we're getting close to that seventeen point five utilization. You know, we need to sort of hold the line or we need to, right? That doesn't necessarily mean the people, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and we, we, we would do that by talking about like Blake said, funded positions.
Yeah.
So we.
Absolutely.
Talk about a funded position, you might have a little bit more, you might have a little bit less on average, it works out to this much funding. In this many.
And that would be that target, right?
We would describe it, okay.
Yeah, I think the times that it would be maybe over is when I had a member transferring in and a member's still here to leave, right? So that's something that's also, it is manageable, um, but sometimes not always avoidable. So if I want that to be simultaneous, then, then there may be that overage. But then there may be times when the member's left and there's six months goes by and I can't. The person doesn't sold their house. And we've seen, uh, a couple of years go by, right? So it is, it's very dependent on any of it.
Brand cash, for instance.
And that billing will go up and down, up and down every month, depending on, you know, what's happened, right? With the people coming in, people going out, somebody who is off sick, that kind of thing, that'll go up and down. At the end of the, even at the end of the day, your bill will be based on the full year. We sort of project for the first three months, right? But for the first three quarters, we project and then we reckon so.
Correct. Yeah, well, come Q three is when we start to make some of those, uh, recommendations of either. I, I anticipate a reduction just based on the F T E, maybe some of the training or equipment or something is not much in the life, right? So I expect a reduction in, in that invoicing, three potentially, and then, yeah. Figure out rest of the year based on what happens, right? It just gets tighter and tighter as year goes.
So that's our Q three, but for you, that would be.
Sometimes that, if there's adjustments that can be to support, you know, your budget.
Thank you, Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. So I just need a, yes, we have nineteen established positions, we've got seventeen still, two are vacancies. But those two vacancies being the funding positions. So if one of the seventeen leaves, you can draw from one of the. Think big.
Sure, I completely understand your question.
Well, would, okay, we've got seventeen working and two are off. Um, and we want to keep seventeen positions and have two vacant. I don't know if they're called hard vacants or, I don't know what those two are called anymore. So I just don't want to lose our full.
I understand of nineteen. So I guess the part about, so if I had seventeen and one, I'm going to lose one, I'm going to. They block that position, I can't put somebody else in that position. Um, but if I want to fund, uh, say, okay, I want an extra member. And I put it into one of the soft vacancies or the, the frozen position. And then the member comes back and I have this member and now I'm.
I then the member comes back and I have this member and now I'm double bonking. And so therefore you will see eighteen point five. That's where you'll see that increase because I can't. Um, I I that member, they'll come back and this member's here and they're stationed here. So I I can't just, I guess, borrow a member from somewhere to fill that, okay?
My concern is I just never want to lose that nineteen. I don't want to lose the nineteen, we don't need that for complement. But to have that ability to sell it, because you never know, you know, five years from now, boy, we might be needing all nineteen, that's five. So.
She said, well, but.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so you have a member departing to high level. Has that uh process started?
Correct.
You would look to, have you, have you undertaken the efforts then to fill that position?
I have been in discussion with staffing and. Um, I guess to kind of make it a simple process, the men, they initiate the start. Uh, to transfer to high level, then they search a system and members put in their desirable uh detachment. They search that and find out who's the best suited for that. So that would be staffing's portion, but they have started the. The process to build that member's position, yes.
Thank you. All right, counsel, anything else? Thank you very much for coming. I think there's going to be a bunch of discussion. Now we can get to the debate part of some things, but um. Uh, we really appreciate the time you've taken because now we can talk data. And that's really what's been missing to this point. Um, and 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 um, I'm really surprised that this hasn't been, given the size of of of. The component of policing as a proportion of municipal budget, the fact this hasn't been more of a discussion on an ongoing basis. Uh, is is a bit surprising to me, not not even just in the last few years, but always. So I really appreciate the time uh in actually giving us um uh command. And uh finance and the statistician, so we could actually understand what's going on. So thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And please don't hesitate any more questions if we can do anything, we're to facilitate, you know, your decision-making, please, don't ask, can't reach out.
We won't. Make sure you spend lots of money in Hinton and buy all your Christmas gifts. And for the rest of the people in the room, let's take a seven-minute break.